Johnson?
Here.
Cypher?
Here.
Keener? Blake? Gauran?
Here.
Willat Leroy?
Here.
Ms. Aid?
Here.
Montgomery Keys?
Here.
And Simmons.
Okay, thank you. I'll add that we're using some new technology, so we might try to keep pace with that and let you know if we have any hiccups. Now we have approval of the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes with a correction on Madam Chair's last name, two Ts. Is that the only other edit, I believe? I don't see any other items.
Support?
Motioned and supported to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Hearing none, the motion is approved. All right, we have a series of public hearings today. Item A, case 2025-19, request for a special use permit to operate an urban commercial farm at 2407 Barclay Street by Cody Sloan. And I'll initially request for a staff report.
Yep, so the applicant is an urban flower farmer. He's moving his business, restoring Eden from Georgia to Michigan. He's requesting a special use permit to operate the farm at 2407 Barclay. He'd grow flowers onsite and supply them to florists and event planners and customers. He does have a depiction of a flower cart on his site plan. However, the ordinance does state that you cannot have onsite sales for commercial farms. However, we've done some work in our ordinance lately that maybe we could revisit in the future if this does get approved. We do have our accessory commercial units which are allowed now in certain areas. This is not an area, but it's around a lot of commercial and it could be worth a look at. And I think it could also be interesting to allow onsite sales if it's an area that is okay for retail. And if we took a look at our accessory commercial unit ordinance which we just wrote, we could potentially also allow farm tables or carts. So while it wouldn't be able to be approved now with onsite sales, it's something we could potentially look at doing in the future. I think it might make sense. We do have a site plan shown. There's two. There's an overall site plan that's zoomed out and then a little bit closer in one shows the planters, but this is a good one to look at. In the bottom left corner of this rectangle that's drawn, that's where Ruttiman Creek actually goes through. It's not depicted on here. I did ask the applicant if he could update that, but that wasn't till today. I'm not sure if he was able to do that. You can see on the aerial photo though that we included where the creek is located and it's to the south and there's quite a bit of landscaping and trees in between that and the farm. And we did send everybody notice within 300 feet and we haven't heard anybody from the public and I believe the applicant may be here. Yep.
Do I have the applicant available? All right, hello? If you wanted to just address the commission with any other updates besides what Mike's presented?
Yeah, no other updates right now. Just we'll look into exploring possibilities for actual community engagement as far as the sale of flowers. But I explained this, I think, even briefly over the phone. It's not a pillar of the business plan as it exists right now. The main goal is to continue our Dahlia hybridization program and also sourcing Dahlia specifically. I mean, that's over two-thirds of what we grow, notoriously hard to ship, and so they have to be grown and sourced locally for use for events and things like that. So that's where our focus continues to lie and yeah, excited to be getting established here in Michigan.
You'll stay right there. Do you have any questions?
Sure.
One question for you. Want greenhouse?
Plans for a greenhouse. It's not even there right now. It would be a small, I think 12 by 10 was the size structure. Yes, this is not a huge operation. Our total planting area is around 5,050, 500 square feet. So it is not, we are not a huge commercial outfit by any means. But again, with a huge emphasis on Dahlia hybridization, it's kind of a very niche explorative type realm to be sitting in. A huge part of our plot is actually given over to discovering new Dahlia hybrids. So while that's exciting and fun, it's also for the businesses' sake, learning how to make that work. And one of the ways of making that work is by sourcing and making those cut stems available for local florists and event planners.
And then I just have one more follow-up question for that. I wanted to ask about shipping on and off your property, like trucks?
No, no.
How do you get them to sales?
Just, we, I actually load them into the car and bring them to, in the main avenue that we're looking towards, especially this year, is as local as we can provide as possible. It not only cuts, if we can work on shoring up our relationships with local florists and local event planners, for us, it looks like twice a week, you know, having a large harvest, going out and delivering those. And yeah, that's kind of how the main stuff works.
Thank you.
Is the growing already occurring?
Yes.
On site?
Yep. Yeah, I was already informed that as far as the growing aspect of it, there wasn't anything that needed approval for. Really where the approval came in, because of the fact that we haven't moved on any structural elements yet, it's just the planting in ground that's happened. And yeah, as you know, the earth waits for no one. And so, yeah, we began growing them. And with the hybridization program anyway, even if I didn't have an outlet to sell cut stems, I would be growing anyway, just to continue what's now a five-year journey of hybridization, so.
Any other questions?
It was mentioned earlier about the prospect of potentially having onsite sales in the future, but your business model or how you plan on pursuing this, or in fact, you just suggested you'd be planting this and growing this even if you didn't have a business model.
Correct.
But the business model that you're pursuing right now is not predicated on having onsite sales.
No.
You would be doing this and looking to distribute it to florists and the like and our community regardless.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, I think the space work is really interesting is considering and there's a lot of small urban farmers. As far as making the business work, it's about having really small niche events right on the farm. So I know like of farmers in Canada and around New Zealand that do onsite Dahlia dinners where they just have kind of like a high tea and they will have a musician come out and they just sit in the garden when it's in full bloom, which is usually August, September. People are getting more like curious with how do we like generate revenue and involve the community in a way that doesn't make it an open cut flower farm where people are constantly visiting because that's really not at all what I want. I don't want people just milling around and doing whatever they please to do. And there's a lot of farmers, like sunflower farmers, where the idea is to mass, you know, mass produce crops and then get in as many people locally as you can. That's certainly not the angle of what we're trying to do. Don't want to annex from the community in any way, but it's not an open farm for the community to just come and visit whenever they please, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You mentioned potentially doing dinners or engagement events. Is that something that's current, you're currently proposing?
No. I would love to be able to do that, but again, we would need some structural elements in place to really facilitate that. We've got across the street, there's the, what was the Barclay Event Center? That's directly across the street, so we certainly have a parking option and being able to partner with somebody who wouldn't be able to be facilitated right onsite for something like that. But again, even in talking about something like that, we're looking at like eight to 10 people, certainly not, you know, anything much bigger.
One other item I didn't see in your application was any mention of items you'd be applying to the ground as part of an urban farm, so additional commercial fertilizers, things of that nature that you wouldn't normally see in a residential garden?
Nothing that you wouldn't normally see in a residential garden. In our practice, we try to go as organic as possible. So everything we've needed so far for the season and as we look to the season ahead, all things we've been able to source locally and nothing that would stand outside of anything that a residential garden wouldn't be using.
Any other questions? At this time, this is a public hearing, so if I have any members of the audience who would like to make a comment, please come forward at this time. Thank you.
Mary Oaks and my acres butt up against, as far as I can figure out from the map that we received, up against our, this project. And I was just, wanted to make sure that they were not intending to, this sounds silly, but you know how things go, that they weren't dumping their stuff on our acre, on our land because there's no house sitting there. That's, that's the area, place where we look at and enjoy and walk in and that. But, so that's what I needed there, just their agreement and a promise that they wouldn't be taking those flat beds and throwing them over the burn because that would, well, just for a while and then they're there for six months. I don't, or their junk, their leftover leaves and their, that sort of thing. I am asking that that not be done. I don't think it will be done. I think they're reliable people, but I just thought if I don't say something and they start doing it, I won't have a leg to stand on. So that makes sense.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Is it okay if they?
Anybody else in the audience? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and go to the phones. 231-724-6721. I will give one minute until we shut that down. We give too many minutes before. It's forever.
I know.
Any calls coming in so far? Okay, hearing no additional public comment. Do we have any further discussion from the commission?
I'd like to motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right, I have a motion and support to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, hearing none. Public hearing is closed and I think. Go ahead.
So that we may proceed with debate. I move to approve the special use permit to operate an urban commercial farm at 2407 Barclay Street based on the findings and facts listed in the staff report.
Support.
Motioned and supported to open up discussion with that motion. Any final discussion?
Yeah, could we have Mr. Sloan?
Yeah, I'd like to hear the response.
Come back up. So if you could just speak to your practices on how you plan on disposing of any waste from your operations?
Sure. Yeah, so thankfully for us, the waste is all very usable product, so it actually stays, if the map was up, you'd see in the back side, we actually have a specific area where all compost goes that gets a chance to break down over the season, becomes a very usable product for us in the following year. That's all right next to the plot, so it's nowhere near property lines. It's right on the outset of where the garden actually is, about 50 feet outside of that. And so, yeah, there wouldn't be any need for worry or concern about dumping. We don't, actually aren't looking to dump anything offsite. We want to keep it all onsite. And yeah, and basically what that looks like is just stem by product as we're cutting throughout the season, leave compost at the end of the year that we'll intentionally want to break down and add to what's going on out there. Yeah, very usable stuff for us in the coming seasons, so.
Thank you.
So your intention is to compost as much of the organic material as possible onsite and be close to the garden area, farm area, away from any other residential properties or living quarters? And whatever does need to be disposed of, you would be using regular waste streams to dispose of? You're not gonna need no commercial dumpsters or anything like that onsite?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No other items for discussion. I will take a roll call, please.
Montgomery Keys?
Yes.
Ms. Aid?
Yes.
Willat Leroy?
Yes.
Gauran?
Yes.
Cypher?
Yes.
Anne Johnson?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Item B, public hearing case 2025-20, request for a special use permit to operate a cat café at 926 Second Street by the Ark of Muskegon. Staff report, please.
So the property zone, Form-based Code Main Street, ordinance was recently amended to allow cat cafés in several districts with a special use permit. This is one of them. There's a few guidelines that they do have to adhere to. They have to be able to follow the noise ordinance. It's limited to only cats. There has to be at least 62 square feet per cat and no more than 15 cats on site. Cats shall always be kept separate from food and preparation areas. The boarding of cats shall take place entirely indoors. Any cats leaving the establishment must be in a carrier. And there must be a sign for 24-hour emergency phone number to be able to be contacted if there's an issue on the building. The building, the suite measures 907 square feet, so that would allow up to 14 cats on site. Notice was sent to everyone within 300 feet of the property and we did receive several comments. I think there's at least six of them, half for and half against. They're pretty lengthy, so we'll probably give you a few minutes here to get caught up if you had a chance to read them.
And in the meantime, if we have the applicant here, if he could please join us. Minute or so for folks to scan over, but review that. Have any additions to the report as presented so far?
No, I just, we just want the opportunity to be able to, I mean, our agency advocates for individuals with disabilities. We've been in Muskegon County for, since 1954. So our goal is to provide jobs for individuals with disabilities and also have the opportunity to partner with Big Lake Humane Society to provide forever homes for cats in shelters. So it's a twofold business venture that we're working with and we would just love to be able to appeal by that downtown Muskegon.
Let me know when you guys feel you're good on your review here.
I have some initial questions, if that's okay. The applicant, I'm a cat lover, so don't think I'm not, because like I have a, well.
See, I'm more of a dog lover, so.
Anyhow, I was looking at your plan and I was looking for where litter boxes and those kinds of things are gonna be kept.
Where they're kept? Well, if you're, did you see the drawing? So that we separated?
Yes, it's what I'm looking at.
Okay, okay, so we separated the two partials that will have the coffee side and then we'll have the cat side. So we'll have, we're gonna have built benches and then the cat boxes are gonna be underneath.
Gotcha.
So, and we, and those cat boxes are actually boxes within itself, so.
So the coffee area and the cat area are gonna be two basically separate?
Completely separate, yeah, and it's a, it's pretty cool. It's just a glass wall. So when you're in the coffee area, you can see the cats, yeah.
And then I was gonna ask about, you're partnering with an animal agency, so as far as grooming, fleas, vacuuming, all those things, you got that?
Yeah, they're completely vetted before they come in for temperament, shots, all that, before they even come to our facility. Big Lake's gonna take care of that. They'll take care of all the adoptions, you know. We're, they're taking care of the cat side. We're taking care of the workers and the coffee side.
That's, that's good clarification, thank you.
Any discussion over here?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
This is probably more for staff. So it's noted that the unit space is 907 square feet, but because of the partitioned area, is that inclusive of the entire space or the partitioned area? And would the cap be applicable to the area where just the cats are?
It's written as the establishment must provide 62 square feet per one cat. That's, that's all it was listed as. I guess I would interpret that as the whole site. They're not required to partition them off, but they've chosen to.
Okay.
My understanding is, is they partitioned it to separate between the preparation of food?
Or we're not, we're not preparing food, but in order to even serve coffee, we have to separate that.
Correct. And so I would interpret that to be the space in which cats are free to roam would be the sort of footage that they, I mean, that's some discussion here, but
I guess I'd like a little clarity to what the city manager asked. Mike, so when you come up with the 14, or the 14 cats onsite, you're using the entire space?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would like to mention they're only asking for four to six cats, but I wanted to establish a maximum number based on the ordinance, so.
Just to piggyback on that line of questioning or thought, could we, if we were to approve the special use permit, could you add a condition or can we add a condition that it cannot exceed six? I mean, you've heard that they only plan on having four to six and given that partition space is less, we could stipulate that no more than X number?
Yes, and I think it'll be important that we run through the exercise after maybe the public hearing and we talk about if it meets some of those issues and that would be the rationale for limiting.
We're actually asking for eight is the maximum. That's our HOA limit.
And then.
How did you arrive at that number? Because some of the communications I've been reading from folks is that it's limited to two per unit, two cats or two dogs per unit. So how did you arrive at the eight, the number of eight cats that are allowed per the HOA?
Because it's a business versus actual living condo, live-in condo.
Okay, so there's a carve-out in HOA by laws that allows for?
Master deed.
The master deed. But the bylaws say something different, so there's a conflict there, but that's not for us to, you know, adjudicate, but I just want to understand that the deed says one thing, the bylaws say nothing. There's potential conflict, okay.
Sorry to interrupt. My name's David Wilson. It's the dividing wall that's in there. Using the 62 feet.
Thank you.
And then one question I had is what the air system is for that unit compared to the rest of the building, whether there's any interaction between the HVAC systems? I know you had a floor plan, but I didn't.
It has its own HVAC system. And just that one section.
And just that side.
Those are newly installed?
Yes.
Okay, because I know previously when it was the, you know, it was the café and they did roasting onsite when I was there and they were doing roasting, it was a bit overwhelming.
Yeah, no, no, we bought our own.
And so you have additional odor controls and HVAC?
I mean, our goal is to not have a cat smell. I mean, that's.
A couple of things we're doing to address that issue is we. Wooden pellets that they special. Through them toward the. Secondly, the people that we'll be training, part of the job is obviously taking care of the cats in the area, but they'll be cleaning cat boxes minimum two times a day, probably more.
But their goal, yes.
As much as they have free time to do. Our goal is to have it as spotless as possible.
Okay, Commissioner Ms. Aid?
I'm good.
Good, okay. And then one final question was for how long that the animals would be left unattended?
We will be, well, let's see, I mean, we close at like eight o'clock, so eight o'clock in the evening until probably six o'clock in the morning.
And that would be?
Well, probably nine o'clock in the evening until six o'clock in the morning.
And that would be seven days a week?
Mm-hmm.
Any final questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Thank you so much. I'll open it up to any folks in the audience who'd like to address the commission. You'd have three minutes to provide your remarks. Welcome Cindy.
Hello, I'm Cindy Larson and I live in the building. I don't live directly over the top of it. We do have a tenant that lives over it who has a dog and then I live next to that. So obviously, cat café sounds super exciting. It'd be great for the downtown. However, when you're living in the building, you can see, it just makes us super, super nervous because these are goals to make sure there's no smell, goals to make sure the cats don't get out, goals to make sure the cats don't pee in a common area. So concerned about the proximity of the common area to this cat café. So they do have one door that goes outside and then we use, then there's the common door that goes to the elevators and the guest bathrooms. So I don't want to use up all the time because there's one other person here. But, so it's just making us nervous because we don't know what to do, you know, how are we gonna manage the relationship? I did, I didn't call Blue Lake because I thought it would heaven can wait, so I called the heaven can wait people and asked a lot about questions. And they even had concerns about how difficult it is to manage a cat café and that it takes a lot of work and it's a lot of effort. And they recommended, just FYI, that's just, they should even start with only two cats to make sure all the systems are in place and they can manage it. And there's a lot of issues. They said they'll probably have more issues managing it than anything else. So it just makes us pause and wonder, you know, where's this gonna go? Is this really the right thing for that building? I don't think they probably even realized we lived in the building when they purchased it. I mean, I've talked to a lot of people that don't know there's residents there. So we did make them aware at the very first meeting. We told them at the very first meeting, before they even closed, that we are really concerned about this, especially when we heard the 12-cat number. And so they'd have backed that down, which is really good and I'm glad the law's gonna prevent that, but you can just, I'm just like, woo, thinking, where's this all gonna go? I've had a cat before. I've had good cats. They're great, but I have had a bad cat that peed on a chair and I had to get rid of the chair, a brand-new chair. I had bought a house one, so I thought, oh, just change the carpet. I couldn't just change the carpet. I had to take out the floorboards because the cats had peed. So cats are not, you know, always the best thing to manage, so I guess I can stop right there because if you don't get it, then you don't get it. But if you do get it, you'll get it and understand why we're nervous and we don't understand what the recourse would be if we started to have problems. I mean, how often, who's gonna inspect it? How often do they inspect it? Because probably the health department, you know, some places have to get inspected a lot if there's animals involved, so I guess that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello? I'm Emily and I have a business next door. My building isn't directly touching their building. I just also worry about the smell. I'm all for new businesses and I think a cat café is awesome and I stand behind Ark, but I'm just worried about the smell and the odor going through the hallways. You don't know if somebody's allergic or anything like that. I just think of the cigar lounge in the building downtown and that kind of deterred people away from that building. So I would hate to see that happen to the two businesses, the other two businesses in the building.
Any final folks from the audience? If not, we'll go to the phones. 231-724-6721. This is a public hearing. Excitement coming in on the phones? I would take a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Support. Motion and supported to close the public hearing. And do we want a motion?
Do we wanna do the exercise?
Yeah, I suppose.
Run through that? Yeah, sure. So I can just?
There we go.
Run?
Just before you go through that exercise, I need to disclose that I live in the building, I live within 300 feet of this property, so I, so I did receive a notice. But it's not a conflict because I don't have a financial interest in that particular HOA, so.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna.
There's an exercise here.
I'm gonna run through some questions from 20, section 23, 32.4 of the zoning ordinance and the planning commissioner's. And, um, the planning commissioners probably just answer these in their heads and as a motions made, maybe reference, um, if any of these decided, help you decide to your conclusion. So, um, the first question is, do you believe that this use is consistent with all adjacent uses and structures? Two, do you believe the proposed use would be considered offensive or a nuisance for any of the following reasons? Increased traffic, noise, vibration, or light? And do you, do you find the adequate water and sewer infrastructure exists or will be constructed to serve the use?
So what are we supposed to do?
Um, well, he mentioned to answer them in your head, but I think.
And we can, we can answer them out loud if we want to go through one.
Well, I don't know if that's what you, I know this is kind of new to us. Um, is this what, how?
So I think we need a motion.
Or is that just a part of the deliberations?
Yeah, so it could be part of the deliberation.
It's a motion to discuss it and we'll decide whether to move forward or amend the motion.
I'll, I'll take that then. Um, I move to approve a special use permit to allow a cat cafe with a maximum number of fourteen cats at nine twenty-six Second Street based on the findings of facts listed in the staff report.
Support.
Okay, so a motion in support. Any discussion about that specific motion, which includes fourteen cats?
I, I, I first want to talk about the number of cats. So, um.
I don't think we can have half a cat.
No.
That would definitely not smell good.
Um, but, um, that fourteen is, is much too, um, too large in terms of space. Maybe a few. I, I like the comments that were made about, um, maybe starting with a very small number on management, um, on that. Um, that's the first thing that I've got in my head about that, um, in particular.
Commissioner Mize?
So was the motion for fourteen cats?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
So we have to amend it.
Could be modified.
You don't have to amend it for me, um, because I don't think that this use is compatible. I think there's a reason why, um, this type of use is not a, a use permitted by right. Um, and so I, I, I just don't think that it's, uh, compatible with the existing uses in the, uh, building.
There's a question for our planning manager. Do we have the opportunity to approve a permit for up to X number of cats, or do we start out with four and a smaller number or eight? I don't think any of us want fourteen. Um, some of us are against this regardless of the number, but, um, is there an opportunity to approve a permit for a six-month or a one-year basis up to four and then review it at a future time to renew the permit? Um, or is that not, we don't have the flexibility within, uh,
Well, I believe.
zoning act and planning laws and like.
I believe we'd have to run through the same public hearing process and notice everybody, so it'd essentially just be a new request. It wouldn't really be much of an amendment.
So it would be just, uh, we'd be giving a permit for X amount of time and then we'd just do the process all over again.
If, and they would shoot for a higher number that second time.
Um, and then I had a question regarding the current expectation of inspections as to whether we would, in, expect that the health department, obviously there's a coffee shop, so the health department's going to be involved in that capacity, but what involvement health department would typically have in this case? Or any other inspection agency that we're aware of?
Well, our inspections department isn't probably not going to need to do too much. It's not a change of use for them. Um, the health department will do whatever they do. I, I'm not sure exactly what that entails, but they will have to get their permit.
Yeah, I'm assuming with food, there's a regular.
Right.
Yeah, inspection process there.
Yes, there is. And, and I knew, I, I worked for public health for twenty-three years. I, I can tell you that, um, having the combination of both animals and food is probably unique. So it'd be something you'd have to ask the department on how they would handle that.
Mike, in this situation, um, due to the zoning, this type of operation cannot be embarked on by right, correct?
Correct.
Especially use. Uh, ju- just for, you know, clarification in my own mind, you know, we, we have a general business area with commercial storefronts, um, throughout the, the downtown. Um, would pet stores?
Yes.
Be allowed by right as a commercial operation?
Um, I would like to look that up real quick. It would only take a minute.
We're not all an encyclopedia, so. Um, any other items we wanted to talk through in the meantime? Go ahead.
Um, so I was just looking at, at what we could do regarding conditions because one of the questions came up like as far as recourse or if things were going sideways. Um, and per special land use, we can put conditions on, uh, addressing concerns such as traffic noise, glare, odor, things of that nature. So two of those would seem to fit, uh, the discussion that we're having here. Uh, that if there were, you know, kind of like we do with, um,
Cannabis.
cannabis, if there's an odor issue that we receive a complaint about, that gets investigated to determine if, if there's something there. That could be a reasonable condition to put on this. Um.
I would agree that, you know, the, again, that the noise was also mentioned as a potential issue. Um, so first of all, the, this commission um, is interested in the idea of expanding business opportunities. We, you know, we did approve the, the ordinance change, so, um, this specific situation, we're just trying to account for how we can make sure that it's viable, you know, so that it doesn't become a, a dead idea.
Can I ask again on the HOA, what, what is the maximum per, for household, for animals? It's two, two cats, two dog, two, if anything, two iguanas? Yeah, okay.
No fish. Somebody said no fish.
All right.
We're still checking on pet stores.
I don't, I don't believe I've ever seen the word pet store or shop in our ordinance if it's defined like that. We do have, um, vets.
Have any current?
Vets and kennels defined, but it's not allowed specifically in this district.
Okay.
We usually define it by kennel.
Um, okay. Well, what I'm generally hearing is, is that if somebody wanted to put a motion forward, it would need to, after we resolve this one, it would need to be for a lower amount and have some caveat for recourse with issues and how that would be resolved potentially through a complaint process with SafeBuild. Um, but we have a motion on the floor.
Okay. It wouldn't be for anyone on the diocesan staff. It'd be someone within the HOA because I'm trying to understand, is this something that the HOA had to vote on? To allow, has that vote happened? Is this, you know?
My first, my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, is, is that regardless of what's viable from ordinance side, the HOA would then be on top of that and they would have to resolve that amongst themselves.
So the HOA still has to weigh in? Do we have confirmation on that? Like the HOA, because I, because I've heard, I've got a, a letter from the HOA president who indicated that he'd heard no complaints or issues from.
That was the neighboring HOA.
Oh, that was the neighboring HOA, okay.
And then I've got, you know, some communications that we've heard from some tonight of some business owner, neighboring business owners, um, who aren't keen on it as well as residents who aren't keen on it. And so I'm just wondering if this is all moot.
I don't think we've seen any positive.
If the HOA is going to vote it down, like, why are we necessarily?
So we did receive and folks in the audience and, and watching, we did receive commentary from neighbors. I don't believe we received any positive commentary from those in the same building.
Yes, um.
We only, you know, we see positive.
Yeah, we did.
Other neighbors, other buildings.
There, there's, there's, there's one in the building.
One in the building.
There's two in the building who were, have concerns and then there were two others, uh, two other neighbors, uh, who support it. And so we got three support, two concern.
I suppose if the applicant, I, I guess, you know, if we want to ask the applicant to describe how they anticipate this going forward.
Additional questions for the applicant if we could hear from them.
Bring the applicant back up here. Basically, a- as mentioned before, you know, the concept of cat cafes is not something that we're against. It's the concept of these adjustments being viable. So how do you see yourselves moving forward in this scenario?
Yeah, my, my name is Gary Post. I live at, uh, nine forty Second Street, uh, in one of the units above where the, uh, cat cafe, although at the other end of the development. I'm also the, uh, developer of this, uh, project as well as, uh, currently chair of the board for the HOA. Uh, Arc of, uh, the Lakeshore, you know, purchased this building, uh, a little over a year ago. Uh, I do believe that we've been, you know, quite transparent through the whole process. Uh, I mean, that was their initial intent when they purchased the property was to, uh, you know, develop, uh, the cat cafe. Uh, we've had a couple of different meetings with the, uh, property owners there and I certainly understand Cindy's concerns, uh, Emily's concerns, uh, there as well. I think that's a concern all of us, but I believe that we've adequately addressed those. Um, I know David and, and Karen who have been deeply involved in this project, they also lived in one of the townhomes, uh, up until a few years ago. Uh, I have confidence. Uh, we, we've talked about, um, you know, the odor issues. We've talked about, uh, loose cats or that possibility. Uh, I'm confident in our conversations with them that those are all being, you know, adequately addressed. Um, I think this is a small business. I believe it's a win-win, you know, for Arc and the people that they serve. Uh, I believe it's a win for the, uh, rescue organizations, whether that's the Humane Society or Heaven Can Wait or others. I think it's a win for them as it gives them more exposure and hopefully puts, uh, you know, cats in the homes of, uh, people that, that can use them. Uh, with all apologies to, to Jill, I'm, I'm not a cat lover. I currently, uh, actually probably, uh, have a, have a bit of an allergy to them, but I can also say that we have a daughter who owns four cats and I can visit her house and there's no odor, there's no allergies. Um, there's, there's methods now that, uh, they can be well taken care of and I'm confident that, uh, Arc will take the same steps, uh, to mitigate any of those concerns that we have there as well, so.
Uh, one more item, I guess, we don't necessarily have it in the requirements, but I would have asked if there was signage that basically makes it clear to anyone entering the premises that there are cats, um, which I'm pretty sure by that sign.
Yes, yeah.
Get that impression.
Yes.
But, you know, I have, I have gone into establishments and not realized cats.
Oh, yeah. You mean like allergies beware? Yes, absolutely.
Go ahead, Mike.
I do want to mention something. The zoning ordinance actually defines a commercial kennel as any premises on which more than three dogs or four, more than four cats older than four months old are cats. So.
More than four?
Yes. They just kept that for, they actually don't.
As used by right, they could do up to four.
By right, they could do four.
Okay.
Just four.
Gotcha.
That clarifies a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
I mean, that, you know, that's really helpful to know. I do have, I did another question for the applicant. Uh, can you just explain your business model some, you know, for folks that aren't familiar with the cat cafes and also how you plan and operating? I know you got the, the cafe portion, you'll be selling beverages and the like, but I did see some, um, costs, uh, or fees associated with the, the cat portion of it. Can you just help, um, us understand how that operates?
So we traveled to the state of Michigan. There's probably about, probably twelve to fifteen cat cafes in the state of Michigan. Everybody charges different. So basically the premise is people, um, book time with the cats. So our, I, I think we just got our website up and going, but it's not up and going. It's not live. But anyway, it's like six dollars for thirty minutes that you can book time with the cats. So say I want to book me and my two kids, so I would pay eighteen dollars for thirty minutes to go in and spend, you know, thirty minutes with the cats. We'd play with them. Maybe it's because I don't want to have a cat in my house and so I want to take my kids there just so that they can play with the cats and they get their cat fixed and then we go home. Or, you know, maybe I book an hour and it's ten dollars. Or maybe I want to have my kid's birthday party there. So I book an hour and a half and, you know, rent the place for an hour and a half and have thirteen kids there to play with some cats. You know, or Baker College is right across the street. Maybe the kids want to, you know, students want to go bring their laptops and hang out there for an hour and have the cats hang out there on their laptops and pet them, you know? It's a relaxing type atmosphere for the students, so they can go hang out with the cats and study.
So on the cat side, it's just going to be free-flowing cats, are you able to kind of go and play? You'll have doors partitioning the two then?
Oh, yeah, there's, yeah.
It's not an open door, it's a physical partition?
No, the health department had us completely block that off, so we've already been in touch with the health department. We've passed all that stuff. So, um, and to their point about the open corridors, we do have, so if you look, there's, we have the coffee shop. There's a glass door going into the cafe. So there's one barricade here. There's another barricade that they can never get into. So there's two barricades where they can get to the common corridors. You go into the back section, there's going to be a door here. So they have to get through that door and then get through another door before they can get to the common corridor. So there's two blockages before they can even get to the common areas.
Speaking of the, let me have one more follow-up. Speaking of the doorways and, uh, had to access the, the building, I, I know I had heard concerns in the past about it being accessible, um, given the stuff's in the front and the only accessible entrance is in the back. And, you know, you'd have to walk through the front, go all the way to the back, then come back around to the front, uh, to be served. And, um, the concern was that wasn't equitable, like forcing, you know, someone that is mobility challenged to go all the way back and loop around just to get to the front versus having an accessible entrance at the front. Are you contemplating ways to improve that or, or change that so that, you know, that it is an accessible entryway from the front? Um, you know, whether that's trying to figure out with the city putting a ramp in right there or another idea that I'd heard in the past was putting a, um, in that front foyer that you go to the rest of the building, like doing an entrance into, um, uh,
We did that.
the cafe there, so.
Yep, that was done.
Oh, that's already been done. You guys already put that, see? I haven't been in that building in a while then. So you already have an extra side entrance there, okay. So I didn't, I didn't see, um, reflected on here, but it's there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, that is good to know. I'm happy to hear that that access, um, has been added and has been improved. So thank you for doing that.
We did not do it. I mean, we didn't pay for it, Mr. Posted.
Thank you.
All right, so let me get this correct then. If, if they do four or less cats, then they don't even need to come see us about this.
Correct, yes. And I'm of the. As a use by right, you're saying, as a use by right with underlying zoning, that they could have up to four cats there, um, qualifying as a kennel, a commercial kennel.
Register as a kennel.
Not a kennel. They'd be under a kennel, so it'd just be a coffee shop.
And kennels aren't allowed in that district.
Oh, you're saying, oh, okay. I thought you were saying, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Say that again.
Once it becomes a commercial kennel, once you exceed four cats.
Which is a use by right or not?
Right.
Is the commercial, yeah, that's what we're. Not allowed there, but, but they would not qualify as a commercial kennel so long as they have four or fewer cats on site. But there's nothing otherwise in the zoning that would preclude them from having cats on site. Okay. So knowing that, I'm of the mind not to approve the permit at this time. Operating, you know, if you still move forward with the, the cat cafe, you're starting off with four, you know, seeing how that goes. And then, you know, if there aren't, if this isn't, you know, a, a problem, you know, your neighbors find out, oh, no, this is not a problem whatsoever. We don't have issues with it. We enjoy it. Um, then there could be opportunity to then expand it, but that, that's where my thinking is at this moment.
Can you give us a timeframe? Because I can guarantee you, we're probably not going to be successful if we just have four cats.
That's good to know.
Is there a minimum number of cats that you considered in this business plan that you needed in order to be?
I mean, six to eight was our, I mean, we never wanted to go past eight because we don't think it's, I mean, for us to consciously want to be clean, cleanly and have the people that we support be able to successfully clean them and, you know, be able to feel good about themselves in cleaning the area. Eight was our always max. And the, the, um, cafes that we've gone to across Michigan, I mean, there's one cafe where there was thirty-six cats. So, I mean, we are way under the cat limit that we've seen in the areas that we've gone to. So we think eight was just like, you know, way easy to go with. So, I mean.
Mike, could you be able to confirm for us the square footage in the enclosed area where the cats would be allowed?
I would not be able to do that. Do you have any dimensions on that?
It's like planned with no dimensions. Say it one more time?
We have a paper set upstairs. I can go grab those.
Um, because we, we do definitely have a square footage in the ordinance of how many cats are allowed per square footage.
No.
So there would not be, their initial assumption is seven, but I think we should confirm. Anything over here?
In our plans.
I was going to say I. I did rough measurements, not exact, because there's a big window. Hallway to get to the, I can measure those, but it was above.
I don't know that the hallway would count.
Just from there, where they're.
Part of the room.
There's a door being shown to the hallway? Is that correct?
Yes.
So the door would have to be open.
Yeah, so like I said, I didn't count that one. I, I just threw a tape.
For the sake of clarity, I think it's useful to know exactly what we're making possible.
Um, so I was reading some of the, the comments, uh, from the emails and some of the concerns and there was, uh, in one of the emails. So, I was reading some of the comments from the emails and some of the concerns, and there was, in one of the emails, it noted some of the suggestions was building a separate separation wall, giving up access to the shared hallway, elevator, and bathrooms, that's been done. A separate heating and cooling vent system should be required to avoid any allergies or odors to be transmitted, and they noted that it was a separate HVAC system with additional.
And purifiers?
Yeah, and purifiers, so that's been done. So, it goes on to say extra sound insulation, that wouldn't really be our purview. Separate, oh, separate dumpsters, I don't know that would be our purview either, well, maybe, but. So, I think, you know, a number of these concerns have already been addressed per some of these emails.
Go ahead.
So, I want some clarity on the kennel issue, since that's been brought up. So, if there's more than four cats, it's considered a kennel and that, that use is not permitted in this current zoning?
Correct, unless it's a cat cafe.
Unless it's a cat, and then that's allowed under a special use.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, and we have a total on the area, the cat area is about three hundred and sixty-five square foot.
I believe it's sixty-two.
Says thirty-six point seven by ten.
So, is that six?
No, that's a third, actually.
Six, five point eight.
Five point eight, okay.
That's what's on the plan.
Round it up to six.
We're thinking six.
Six.
Possibly five point eight, which is more than half.
Yeah, five point eight eight, you would round off.
Yeah.
All the way, yeah. Sorry, we gave it wrong plans. We had to, we had to switch our plans.
Where does it say fourteen?
The wall is right here now.
Okay, thirty-six by fourteen. Yes.
One more comment on the cleanliness issue.
Eight, eight point one two?
Yeah. Five oh four.
Eight point one two now.
Yep.
Okay, so now we're back up to eight?
Yeah.
All right, so I think the ordinance allows, based on the square footage, of the, you know, the special permit up to eight. And so, the current motion is for the originally requested fourteen, and do we want to amend that motion or just vote? Any ideas on amending that motion?
I still think eight's a little too high. Honestly, the snowed cats. That is quite a bit of square footage, and they're gonna be taken care of on a regular basis. I'm not concerned about the cats' health, I just think it's a small space for, that's the square footage you put in the ordinance, but that's my opinion.
I'm gonna lean on you to some extent. I'm not a cat person, I don't own a cat, I've never owned a cat. I couldn't, I'm not, you know, well versed or experienced in caring for cats, so I am gonna have to lean on, you know, others.
Yeah, they're pretty.
Yeah, they're very self-reliant. I don't do that, but a few days, yes. As long as they're getting along, they're fine. I don't know, I, I could, I don't really torn on this.
Well, I wanted to ask another question, the applicant, like how they're gonna, let's say this moves forward, whether it's approved at eight or six, or, you know, some other number, how do you anticipate fielding and responding to concerns and complaints that are received from the neighbors or the general public? And maybe there's one cat that's particularly boisterous.
Oh, yeah.
And vice versa, like, are you just gonna be like, okay, we're gonna, you know?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, one hundred percent. I mean, Big Lake is going, like I said, going to vet them, so they have them in their kennels already, so they're gonna pick out the ones that they think are gonna be compatible with the other groups. I mean, I work closely with Alexis, who runs the Big Lake Society. She's very excited about this venture, she knows what's gonna happen, so she, she's not gonna put cats in there that are gonna be disruptive. She is gonna put cats in there, is gonna get along with other ones, and she's already said if there's a, an incident, we'll come get them right away. You know, it's not gonna be an issue, we work well together, I mean, it's, that's never gonna be a problem. And we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna have people there all the time. I mean, we're gonna have, I hate to say, say it like this, but we're gonna have a designated supervisor in the cat area along with one of our individuals we support in there, so there's gonna be two people at all times just in the cat area watching the cats. So, it's not like, and then whoever comes in there to.
During business hours.
During business hours, yes. But other than that, I mean, cats, they're, you know, they're not gonna party all night or anything.
Did you have a final thought there, sir?
Yeah, I do, I just want to speak again. This particular, this cat cafe has some back floors, we don't have carpet in there. Here, and most of the furniture is either metal chairs, tables, which are hard surface, we have a couple of couches, but.
Those won't do that.
It's easily cleaned. For our sakes as well, we do want it clean. Sounds bad or whatever, so it's, some of the cafes did have carpet, which is not, we're not.
Okay. Final question, then, I'm looking for updated.
I got one more question.
Okay.
So, did I hear correctly earlier from Mr. Post that the ARC acquired the entire building?
Just this, just this section.
So, just that space, not the entire, okay, okay. I was gonna say, I mean, if you own the entire building, now you've got, you know, your other tenants to
Yeah.
be accountable to, and if they're having issues with it, and like, I don't want to operate here, and it makes, there's a change in the dynamics. Like, you have more onus to make sure that, you know, everything is.
It was the old drip drop drink, we bought that business.
Okay, just that, just the, that one unit on the corner, okay, thank you.
I own the other two. So, the complaints do come about sharing doors.
Absolutely.
I feel there's somebody that lives there, he also takes care of cats, he's got it a lot under his hair bag, and that's through the back door, and you can smell cat pee.
Bushes actually smell, we've asked Gary to replace the bushes in front, there are actually bushes that smell like cat pee when the sun hits them, so we've asked Gary for permit, yeah, we've asked HOA for permission to replace those bushes.
And as mentioned previously, we have the HOA specific concerns about limits or what have you, do have to go back to that, so. What do we got on the motion, ma'am? Otherwise, we can vote on it and start over.
And, and to just be honest, it's not like we're gonna start with eight, you know, we're not gonna just throw eight cats in there right away. We want to start small, we want to be successful. We're not gonna go in there and just throw eight cats together and say, hey, well, let's figure out how this works. We're gonna start small, we don't want to, we don't want to, you know, fail, we don't want to do that. Especially when we're starting out, you know, with individuals that have disabilities, we want to accustom to our business, we want to accustom them to the cats, they might never have worked with animals before. So, I mean, we gotta be, you know, subject to what their, their needs are too. So, this is a learning curve for everybody that's gonna be working there and everything, so we're not, I mean, we're not going into this just like, oh, we're gonna make tons of money, that's not our goal, we're a nonprofit agency. You know, we're going into there just to.
Thank you.
To, yeah, sorry.
Two amendments, the one that was suggested about odor, right?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I would say. Odor and noise.
Odor and noise.
Cause those are two things we can regulate.
And then the other one was to take the number of cats down from our, from fourteen to eight.
No more than eight.
Which still fits into the particular.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, all right, then, you want me to amend that?
You would, please?
I will. You have some verbiage?
No, I was just writing down, like, I was just writing down notes.
I'd like to amend my original motion by reducing the number of cats to eight, maximum of eight, and then applying the, that they lose their special permit if there's a noise or an odor issue.
That's really hard to enforce. We, we do that with the marijuana.
Yes, you do.
I don't, I've never been able to do that, I don't, we don't have anything that measures marijuana smell, and I don't.
You don't want to go by different people's noses, is that what you're saying?
I'm not even sure how I would do that.
Okay. I don't know how we address that, then, if it's not very effective for marijuana either.
So. If I may.
Yeah.
We're gonna need to find a solution to that period, then, like, whether it's cats or cannabis, like, when we add a, a condition that this could potentially be revoked due to, you know, being noxious and odors, and we do that regularly with our cannabis, like, and I know we have certain facilities that are regular offenders that is very irksome, and so we don't have the teeth to, like, say, hey,
And I do, yeah.
shape up, or we're, you know, we're gonna revoke, like.
I would like to, well.
So, like, I would just like to see how we might be able to.
A suggestion there.
Strengthen it.
Sure, so, I think having that in our marijuana ordinance is helpful, because the people that we are giving the permits to know that, and I'm able to contact them, and they're usually able to switch out their filters, which helps a lot. I don't believe this is gonna be a case where changing out a filter is going to do much, and it's, I don't really know how I would.
Can we include unreasonable number of complaints? And I know that that is subject to discussion, but we can determine reasonability based on, you know, the people in the building, how many complaints over time, but basically, you know, including.
I think it'd be a mistake to leave it out.
Yeah.
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 So, I think that, you know, that it's predicated on.
Well, yeah, I mean, cause then the onus, if I may, sorry. If we're adding that as a condition or potential revocation because of noise or odor, well, then the onus is on us to prove it. And if, you know, they disagree with our assessment, then it would be adjudicated, and we'd have to defend it. So, I would prefer it be in there than not in there. I know it puts, you know, perhaps our planning department in a little bit of a challenging situation, but at least we could enforce on it if need be, and then defend ourselves and find a way that's most appropriate to defend ourselves.
That's a really good point, because while we haven't gone that far with the marijuana people, because they've usually complied, there are tools. To do it. We have a magazine with municipal services, there's a telescope you put up to your nose, and I'm not even joking, it gives you a reading for marijuana smell. We have not done that, we didn't buy that equipment, but if push came to shove, that could be something for that. I don't know what that would be for cats now, but I think we could probably figure something out.
Okay, so something potentially like this permit is revocable based on unreasonable, unreasonable number of complaints relating to noise and odor.
Is that big enough for you, unreasonable number of complaints for odor, nose?
Noise.
Noise or odor?
Or repeated, is what we use, repeated, is what we use in the marijuana law. Keeping, keeping in mind that even if we, if we revoke the permit, they could still have four. Yep.
Yeah, like, they can still have four cats.
Yeah, without, without approval from us on anything.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, yeah, is that, was that clear as mud? Did you get anything else?
I think it's helpful to have that in there.
Thirty-two, I think it'd be, we'd be missing about.
So, this would be the maximum number of eight cats.
Unreasonable number of complaints?
I would say an unreasonable number, because even if it's, if you get twenty people, you know, who are saying this is terrible. Reasonable and/or excessive. So, it's the number of complaints, it's revocable based on unreasonable number of complaints.
And then we're changing it to eight.
And the persistency of it, because, I mean, you could get, you know, ten complaints, they fix it, and there are no more complaints thereafter, well, then it's good.
It's not automatically revoked, it's just revocable.
Given an opportunity to cure it.
We also don't have to go, we also don't have to go with the number that is calculated. We can use the exercise to bring that down. If you feel necessary, and I believe they're only asking for six.
Six, well, they prefer eight, no, six to eight.
They're asking for.
I mean, I'd be, I'm good with six, just, you know, but.
Well, I am too, quite frankly.
Me too. I'm more comfortable with that.
Okay, let's move that, I would like to change my motion to six versus eight.
So, we're changing.
Six versus eight, controls in for odor and noise, anything else missing of that? I think we've got, I think, I'm not hearing anything from.
Anybody over there?
Our commissioners over there.
Well, well, I like the idea, you know, I'm not excited about this at all, but I like the idea of what the mayor had to say about possibly starting with a smaller number, say four, and the petitioner talked about starting with a smaller number. And I know it's difficult to go through these machinations again at a later date, but then I think it provides some kind of checks and balance at that point. You know, like I said, I'm not really excited about it to begin with, but four is not a whole lot different than what somebody might have in a residential unit.
The applicant did mention that they would not stay at that for long, so, that they would be coming back just because of the business model.
But if it's at four, if that's the, if that's the limit, then if they want to go more than that at some point, they gotta come back here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Does the, let's say we went, we're doing a hypothetical, Mr. Planning Manager. Let's say we don't do a permit right now, they move forward with four, everything's hunky dory, no issues, it's working well, they want to add a couple more cats, maybe up to four, it sounds like eight is the max period, given the size constraints. Can we table this question of the permit to a future date while they move forward with what's available, used by right, and then reconsider it? So, they don't have to pay again, basically. We could still, we could still notice the same property owners, we've heard from several of them, we could let them know that this is coming back at a public hearing, but at least saves them the, the cost in application to go through the process again, and I'm just.
Yeah.
Throwing a scenario out there.
I'm not aware of a sunset date on a table, I don't know if the city managers have heard on that, but that, that just coming into question is.
Yeah. If, well, I, I think you either have to, you either have to set a specific date, or it has to come up at the next meeting.
Okay.
So, we, like, yeah, so that things are living per duty, so we could say.
Six months?
We, we, yeah, we, we could put a, like, you know, six months from the time of opening, or three months, or whatever it is, but we have to set a specific date on it, otherwise we have to take it up next month.
Would you be comfortable doing six, allowing them, I mean, I think if four's gonna work, six is gonna work, and allowing them to come back, they need to expand to eight. I feel like that's.
I'm comfortable with that, too.
An amount that allows them to move forward.
I will tell you, you know, there's, and this is just an opinion, but there are a lot of people, where they live, they're not allowed to have any animals at all, and a lot of people really like animals. And so, you know, it'd be nice to have a place, I mean, dogs, cats, iguanas, I don't, I don't care what's in it, but it'd be nice to have a place where people can have contact with animals, I think it's good for your mental health, honestly. So, you know, I see the point, and I'm really torn on this, because I really like, I'd be like there every day if I didn't have my own cats. But I, but I understand the concerns of the people that live in the, as well. So, it's, it's difficult, I've been around cats my whole entire life, I get it.
Okay, so just to clarify, regardless of the motion.
Yep.
Four cats.
I don't even remember anymore.
Yeah, four cats is allowed.
Nobody's preventing four cats.
So, four cats are allowed without a permit?
Yes, they can do up to four without even talking to us.
Correct, and so if there is an amendment to the motion, changes the number from fourteen, I think we should take that and run with it.
Yeah, I mean, you've already proposed a friendly amendment down to what?
I did, down to six.
Down to six. Save a friendly moment down to six.
Controls.
Who supported that?
I did.
So, did it accept the friendly? I'm sorry. Like, taking over his chair, nope.
It's on the screen now.
All right, so we have.
Oh, yeah.
An amended motion, amended motion for six cats instead of fourteen, with caveats for noise and odor complaints.
Yeah, I think that's what.
Put that into writing in a way that makes sense.
You good with that?
And.
Okay, great.
We're ready to vote on that motion, okay.
So, we're voting, so we friendly amendments, we don't have to vote on the amendment, we're just, okay.
For six?
For six. All right, roll call, please. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Cypher?
Yes.
Gauram?
Yes.
Willat Leroy?
Yes.
Azade?
No.
And Mako Rakeest?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. There are other items on our agenda today.
But that's a good one, I mean, who, I mean, we allow chickens, right? So, I mean.
Because my computer closes down.
One went walking through my front yard the other day, I was gonna call you and say, come get a cat, but I didn't do that.
Square, you know, a lot of competing.
All right, going back to, we have an item C on the agenda, an additional public hearing, request to rezone the property at sixty-two Irwin Avenue from our neighborhood residential to our M1 low-density multiple-family residential.
So, this is a former church building that's vacant. So this is a former church building that's vacant. It's zoned our neighborhood residential. Um, which would allow up to a duplex. Uh, there's no alley, so you can't get any more units than that out of that per the ordinance. Over its uh fairly large building, uh over twenty-five hundred square feet that could host more units. Um, so when staff heard what the applicant was looking at, uh he was discussing maybe up to four units. Or possibly even going the single-room occupancy route. Uh, and I let him know that the R M one zones would be the best fit for that. That way you could get um, let's see, how many units per acre? Sixteen units per acre, uh but on this specific property with the calculations, they would only be allowed to four, so they could have a fourplex under an R M one. They'd also be able to have uh the ability to apply for the single-room occupancy. We'd have to take a look at how that would be drawn up to see how many people would be allowed though. Um, but that appears to be the best zoning ordinance for this type of use. The master plan also discusses um how we should be a little more flexible with. Uh former civic buildings, you know, schools and churches, because there's uh often have a a tough time redeveloping these properties. So rezoning to R M one fits the master plan. We've actually held some focus groups uh for all the properties up and down PEC. To rezone them. We may see a request here in the next month uh to rezone those to form-based code. Uh however, I would still not consider this a spot zone if this was the only property because it needs the intent of the master plan, so. Uh, I don't believe the applicant was here. He did show up last Thursday and we let him know. It was supposed to be today though, so.
And I don't what I don't see is the the description of R M one. Is that something that you could make up?
I think it's an attachment.
I'm checking. I didn't see it.
Would allow sixteen units per acre.
Can you pull it up on?
Should be four units on that property. They could apply for a special use permit for a single-room occupancy building.
I really had some questions for the applicant too.
And so the again, the applicant is not in the audience, just confirming. Not seeing one.
Would you like to see the uses or the area and bulk requirements?
Um mostly I was just looking for requirements.
Okay.
Specifically, I'm curious about the alley situation.
There's no alley requirement with the R M one to achieve the density.
And the actual property outline did or did not include that parking lot to the right?
The parking lot comes with the property.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I don't have an applicant here, uh but this is a ne- initial discussion, otherwise I'm gonna move to the public discussion. Okay, anybody in the audience have comment? This is a public hearing. Seeing none, I'll go to the phones. Two, three, one, seven, two, four, six, seven, two, one. We did notice all folks within three hundred feet. When it's here in the room, nobody's on the phones. I'll take a motion.
Moved to close the public hearing?
Port.
Moved and supported to close the public hearing. And so now we would need a motion in order to discuss. Anybody?
I moved the request to rezone the property at sixty-two Irwin Avenue from R to R M one.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, all in favor, yeah, on the. Jump the gun.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Hi.
All those opposed? No? No notes. Okay, try again.
Now I move that the request to rezone the property at sixty-two Irwin Avenue from R to R M one be recommended to the city commission for approval.
Support.
All right, motion and supported a discussion amongst your folks. Thanks for keeping me on task. Right, I was only concerned about the alley requirement, which there isn't one. There's some parking there nearby. And we've been looking to expand opportunities for density within the the city, so I certainly would be in favor. All right, roll call please. Commissioner Montgomery Keast?
Yes.
Mazaid?
Yes.
Willat Leroy?
Yes.
Gauran?
Yes.
Cypher?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, and then we had an additional, yes, uh item D, case twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-two. Request to rezone the property at eleven-eighty-eight Lake Shore Drive from lakefront recreation to form-based code urban residential. Stop.
So this is a vacant lot. Uh, it's in between the Lake Shore Yacht Harbor and Adelaide Point. It's zone lakefront recreation. Uh, it's one point six acres, but much of it is undevelopable because it's under the ordinary high watermark. Um, they did provide a site plan, which is not necessary for a rezoning, but it kinda gives you an idea of how the property could be developed. Um. There there is the bike path and the former CSX railroad easement. Uh, which you would need to get approval to cross both of them. You can see where it comes in off of Western Avenue. And the way the driveway is sloped a little odd like that. That's because he's worked with our engineering department and us. To make that a little safer, so it's not at the intersection where the bike path curves and we avoid some conflict there. So the permit to go over the bike path would be fairly simple. Uh, however, CSX still has rights. To this area and he would need to get approval to get any infrastructure under there. Now, there's already water on the other side. Uh, but we're not sure. I I believe he'd be able to hook up to our water. Uh, but there's questions with the sewer. Uh, and also private utilities like gas and how they would hook up. So that's not totally been achieved. Um, he'd still have to do some. Legwork on on getting that done uh to get the utilities over there, but if he can't, you know, there may be alternatives. Um, tying up with um to gas with the neighbors at the yacht club could be a possibility. He's also mentioned the possibility of. Um, septic. Uh, I guess we'd have to look into that, whether that's allowed in the city. I I I don't know if that's even a. An option if you can't do that. Uh. So there are some issues, um. But uh the the future land use map does. Identify this as lake shore, which is defined as mixed-use development and recreation, water-related activities located along the Muskegon Lake. Lake Shore shoreline. Um. Now, single-family zoning isn't particularly mixed-use, uh but I don't think you could develop anything. Larger on this parcel, so I think it kinda does go along with the different types of uses that are down there. And we'd be a good use. Um, to actually get something built on this property, which is probably as dense as you could go. So uh we do, staff is recommending for. Uh, approval of this as long as they can uh figure out. Getting under the CSX easement and getting their utilities. Um. But I believe we had, let's see, a couple of recommended conditions on a motion. Which would be that the applicant receives permission to install all necessary utilities under the former railroad easement within the next eighteen months. Um, it's very hard to get hold of CSX. I believe the applicant might like a little more time than that, so I'd be willing to be flexible. Um, building permits are issued within twenty-four men- months and that the property shall revert back to lakefront recreation if these conditions are not met. We don't. We haven't really done conditional zonings, but this was one that particularly interests me. Uh, because if it's not able to be built on by this gentleman, I'm not sure if anyone's gonna try to undertake this and uh. It might be better served as recreational uses, so. Uh, I'm flexible on the time limits. I don't really care. Too one too much on how long they would be, two or three years. I I would just like the ability to. Put the zoning back to its in intended or its original use if this project falls through.
Okay, some discussion?
Who owns the property?
Actually, that's a good question. Uh, Coles owns the property.
Okay.
And the property does not have any road frontage. However, um, the applicant is a member um of the Marina. Uh, might be part owner. I don't I don't recall and um. They may be able, they're they're gonna be working with them on an easement out to the street for a road.
Does does Coles own any property that um accesses a a street that they could provide them a?
No, no, uh, we could. Can you pull up the aerial? I don't believe there's really any way, and it's gonna be very difficult for them to get this easement in. Because they're gonna have to bring in a lot of fill, I believe, so and kind of reshape the topography there.
You know, I'm I'm. I thought I think it's unique what you said about the conditional zoning. Um, my concern about that is. I don't know the transaction issue between Coles and the um applicant, but you know, if they purchase the property and then for whatever reason can't get the deal done, then. They don't have a saleable asset at that point. Um.
It's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that maybe somebody else could get that. I I, you know, I don't know. That this is kind of foreign to me.
It it's not the biggest deal if it remains residential. Somebody else would just have to ask for a rezoning if they wanna do something recreational, so. Maybe this isn't the best one to try it on.
To champion that at that point, you know.
Well.
I may not be.
Any other uh discussion? All right, do we have an applicant in the room?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
I was wondering if you have any additional comments to the information presented?
So it is a small plot and really nothing can be done over there other than. A small home and uh I I can undertake it, no problem and actually I'm under contract, so. My contract is expiring on the fifteenth of July and that's our closing date and. The only thing is holding back is gonna be CSX, but I'm gonna hire a lawyer. To go after CSX because it's pretty much they're pretty much inapproachable. There is one lady who's in charge of ten state. So just imagine the crossings. It's it's a lot of crossings, so. We're gonna try that approach uh with the lawyers and then I have a phase two coming up in a couple of days. And if that's complete and there is no toxicity on the land, then I'm go ahead and I'm gonna purchase it. And uh L Y H, which is the Marina part of, and our president is here and a couple of other fellow members. They were gracious to provide me with an easement, you know, uh to exit and access the property. If something, you know, falls through with me buying it, then I can always like buy out the easement. You know, and then it's so it's not gonna be a loss of property like you were concerned about that. What's gonna happen at that point?
Any other discussion from Commissioner? Go ahead.
So so your contract for the purchase of the property expires in July?
July fifteenth is a closing date.
Okay, and I thought I heard you say you're going to purchase the property. I mean, that's the.
Oh, absolutely, unless unless the property is toxic for some reason. I had a phase one done and a phase one. Had concerns, but they did not reveal any toxicity.
Okay.
So phase two was recommended and you know. I was looking at it, if you know water is hard to bring it through, then maybe well water. That's what I'm gonna try to use, so I'm testing for the soil and the water. And um hope for the best, but I will know that till probably the beginning of July. Thank you.
You're gonna you're gonna try and use well?
If if I can get the city water under that railroad track, cause you know, CSX is. Giving you options to work with and you can pick out of their list, you know, but there is no railroad, so. How I'm gonna go under something, it doesn't exist. And even if I go under it, the way they want me to go under it and they come back with a railroad. And the railroad is gonna be off by, you know, just a small amount of length and I'm in trouble again. I gotta redo the whole underneath again, so.
I um again, I've been, I already said this once before, I worked for public health for twenty-three years. Part of my job was working in environmental health. I do not recommend using well water.
Okay.
In the city in Muskegon. Matter of fact, I don't even believe it's allowed um to do that, so you will need to hook up to city water.
And that's no problem.
Sure that you do that, cause there was a lot of industry on the shoreline and it's not exactly, um, I I I wouldn't drink it.
Yeah, I I wasn't gonna drink it, but uh you know, just for like uh shower and. It depends on how it comes back.
It's also very close to the high watermark, so I don't even know that you can well below that.
Yeah, that's right. So you're you're sitting basically right in the aquifer.
Where is that?
Okay.
So there's an intermix between the groundwater and.
I like I like the idea, but I think it's great. Um, I think it's pretty cool.
OTM, yeah, I keep pointing to the far end, far side of OTM. Ordinary water mark.
Yeah.
Which is uh, you know, sea level's like five hundred. Where are we at?
I do think, given Commissioner Mazaid's comments too, I don't believe we should do this as a conditional, I think. Maybe we try that again a.
We discussed the utilities, right? If if we have the condition with the utilities, that's essentially conditional. So we don't know that we need to add an additional.
Well, it's for the rezoning. I think, you know, if he just finds out he can't get it done, it just stays residential.
And that doesn't hurt anything.
No.
Anyway, so.
It doesn't.
I mean, we can change it to something else later.
No, I'm just saying, I agree. It just stays residential and.
Right.
Okay, uh, one more comment, sir?
Yeah, uh, so it's probably was lake for lakefront or recreational because it's part of the Marina. So we didn't, I mean, I didn't even know about it. It's separate, you know, that's a it's in the same fence line of the Marina. So we always, I always thought it's part of the Marina. And now that it's not, you know, maybe that's why it was more lakefront recreational, cause. Everybody always thought it's part of the Marina, but.
Yeah.
It it could be separated off.
Well, that's what you're, it sounds like you're intending to do.
Yeah.
Is to purchase it as a separate entity, so it would not be associated with Marina, but you would need an easement from the Marina in order to access it.
Yes, and.
You have not acquired that yet, or is that part of your?
I I have, I have acquired that, you know, verbally and if my purchase goes through, then. Uh, the Marina will and I will write up the agreement and the easement.
Okay.
After the purchase goes through, but everything is realized basically right now on that phase two.
Okay, um, and so we do have a public hearing, so I'm gonna allow folks in the audience, if they have any comments or statements, thank you, to let us know your. You have three minutes to provide remarks if you have any. Please join us at the podium. Go ahead.
My name is Gary Swindlehurst. I'm the president of the Lake Shore Yacht Harbor Co-owners Association. It's a condominium, uh Marina. There are sixty-three slips, so there are sixty-three individual-owned properties. All paying taxes and enjoying all the things that Muskegon has. Um, maybe shed a little light on how this property developed the way it is. This triangle was part of the Marina, original development. Coles did the Marina development. They owned a lot of pieces. They've been carving off things. But um the Marina actually got going and was being built and this property was all part of it, but then. The family decided they'd like to have a a site for a potential lakefront home, a single residence sometime in the future. So they drew up this piece and set it aside. Until just recently, um, it hadn't been offered for sale in the last year or so, when nobody in the family had any interest in building. Okay, so it became available. Uh, we, the Marina's basically been taking care of the property for over thirty years. So we have a vested interest in what goes there because it's part of our ambiance. It's it's our northern view, okay? Our clubhouse is right there. Um, the Marina board is is very much in favor of this project going through. Um, we think it's a whole lot better used to have a single-family residence than maybe a dog park. Although we all, we like dogs, but there's a big building there with a lot of potential dogs and the line comes right up to our. And the line comes right up to our driveway, twenty or thirty feet from our clubhouse, we don't want that kind of a development near us, you know, we like the green, we like the way things are. Um, in the event the phase two doesn't go through, where for some other reason, the Wilhelms have to back off. We're gonna step in, because it, if it is undevelopable, undevelopable, um, we might be able to afford it.
So you would pursue it as green space?
Pardon?
You would pursue it as green space?
Yeah, we would, we would pursue uh, buying it and just merge it back, so that it would become one, one property again. Okay, and we have some of our owners here, we have a, uh, we have owners meetings every six months where we bring up things like this that are fun to kick around. But um, we have a meeting Saturday, and um, I'm sure we're gonna get more input, because the details of the easement are, are coming to the forefront, and it's along the north line. Kind of beyond our li, our sightline actually, so we won't even see cars going up and down. And there are other issues with our access from Lake Shore, it also is an easement going through a property that was just sold by Kohl's to a local development firm, they don't know what they're gonna do with it yet, but it's possible our driveway's gonna have to move. And it is possible that we'll be coming back and asking about using this access for the Wilhelms for the Marina at some point. So it's, there are a whole lot of pieces moving around, but this, this one, this will be a good use for, for the, this property. Um, it's low density and, you know, it just, just will be a, a nice addition.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience who'd like to comment?
We're, uh, we're also at the Marina and just support everything Gary said. Be a great use to have that with just a house on it, yep.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm Tom Shaw, twelve ninety eight Lake Shore Drive, uh, Mary Price and I are here to support, uh, Gabe and Maju's rezoning proposal enthusiastically. We've known Gabe and Maju first as neighbors on Lake Shore Drive, where they purchased a blighted house on our street and removed it and turned it in now into a, a beautiful green space. You know, mostly by Gabe's own hard work and labor, and so, uh, um, and I'm sure at one point that'll be a, a home site as well, um, that, that's an enhancement to our neighborhood. Um, we also know them as fellow slip owners at Lake Shore Yacht Harbor, and they're great. Gabe's probably our most active member, he makes me feel guilty of all the work that he does around the Marina, so, uh, um, he's always part of, part of the group, and he's a, a great member, and so we just wanted to show up and, and, and say that we're excited about them getting their dream house on the shores of Muskegon Lake.
Thank you, anyone else in the audience wanna comment?
Dennis Kirksey, uh, eighteen fifty-six seater in North Muskegon, but most of you know me, and I was pretty much a resident of twelve oh four West Western for over thirty years, uh, operating that. So I just wanna point out a couple roadblocks with this, just not saying no, I'm just saying concerns. Well, water, Jill, thank you for addressing that, it won't happen on that site. Uh, it's part of the Shaw Walker Plume, there's groundwater contamination, it's probably low levels, but you're not gonna drink that. The site where you're showing the home to be built, that particular spot, that old berm was the original dredge material from uh, what used to be the city dump along that shoreline, so when they put that Marina in, so again, you're not gonna wanna haul it offsite, but you're not gonna wanna, I don't think building on top of it is a really good idea. Uh, unless you're gonna do aisle structure or something there, but that's, again, you got structural engineers can address that. Um, I think riparian rights that are a part of that parcel are very controlling for the neighbors, even though the whole easterly property line of that parcel is owned by City of Muskegon. Um, just in case people don't realize, that's fee simple ownership, the city owns that trail, it's not an easement. CSX easement where you have to bridge there, I understand they still have some rights. Marina's, uh, Lake Shore Yacht Harbor's sewer tie-in is actually right at that southwest corner of Adelaide Point's office. Um, it's very shallow, and it's gonna require some work, because when you go back under there, they, it's a little bigger when you go over toward Kohl's production facility, but they're gonna have to bump up some sewer lines even for a single household, cause the Marina has occasional problems with their sewer making it past that corner of the property line. Again, just some concerns that hopefully everybody's eyes are open as they approach this, cause it isn't just a matter of rezoning. I, I don't like to see development that close to the water, I think it'd be better as a green belt, but again, that's that's all of you, you get to make that decision, but I just wanna raise a few flags, just so everybody's aware that it isn't walk in a park, and it definitely is not a green space, um, it's a brown field, and bear one, and hopefully they've, I'd say, I see the stormwater outfall is on there, so they realize that's there. Um, that's Adelaide Point's forty-eight inch outfall, that, uh, they kept indicating they owned the parcel when they put that in there, I don't know, hopefully they got an easement to put it in, because it's now there. So, anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Anybody else, all right, seeing none, I will go to the phones, two, three, one, seven, two, four, six, seven, two, one. Excitement happening on the line. A motion, so moved, I'm, I move to close the public hearing.
Support.
Motion and supported to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed say no, all right, so we've closed the public hearing, any final discussion from, go ahead.
Make a motion?
To, yes.
I'd, I'd make a motion to, I'd move that the request to rezone the property at eleven eighty-eight Lake Shore Drive from LR to FBC, you are, be recommended to the city commission for approval.
Support.
Will including conditions?
Did not include conditions, do you want, you want to keep that without all conditions?
Without conditions.
Okay, and supported, all right, any discussion?
So what previous speaker was just, um, alluding to, I had questions about myself, cause I had heard previously about the neighboring property in Adelaide Point, um, having claims to own a portion of this early shoreline, and I know they've had activity there, he talked about doing a beach there, I don't think the beach would happen, I don't think the Eagle would allow that anyhow. Um, or there would be other issues with that, but I just I don't know, if you have any insights into that, make sure everyone's had conversations to understand who, who owns what, there's no confusion of ownership, there's, um.
I, I have not talked to any of the neighbors, um, I don't have a survey. It's a private party matter, I guess, wherever the property lines are, but I would say, um, that there's gonna be no development in that area, um, I know the applicant did notice that Adelaide Point maybe, um, by accident could have placed some of their fill on their land. Um, so I know there's probably gonna be at least a conversation with them moving forward.
I, yeah, I've seen activity over there, like earth moving and o, other stuff. And I have heard also that, you know, the person doing the moving owned that property presumably, but I do see from the county property information viewer that it shows Kohl's Quality Foods is the owner. So, I just wanted to get clarification, ha, have we, um, have any of your other members of your planning department reviewed this in terms of, because at one point, we were talking about doing a trailhead at the end of Western Avenue right there, um, and I see that would like come close to, you know, where they wanna put the easement in the driveway onto Western, so like have there been internal reviews of this in discussion in terms of making sure that if we did wanna move forward with the trailhead, um, there it would be possible even with the potential for, um, that driveway, a new driveway, presuming they get the easement from, um, Yacht Harbor.
Yeah, so we did have a pre-development meeting with several departments, and, uh, Dan Vanderheide was there, so I'm sure he's familiar with the most recent topics as well.
So, I, a couple things, I guess, um, after the motion. You know, I appreciate the fact that everybody's rallying around these potential owners, and that's, that's a good thing, but I, it's, it, to me, it's really about is the zoning change that's requested suitable for the property, and it seems to me that this is probably the, the best or maybe on, the only use for this property, um, and so I think that's a good thing. It sounds like there's a lot of balls in the air in terms of things that have to be taken care of, the applicant mentioned some, some of those, others have mentioned some potential pitfalls that have to be addressed, but to me, that's, those are things that ha, the potential owner has to deal with, and for us, it's really about the zoning. And so, I, I think it's, you know, a, a reasonable request, um, and so that's why I, I su, supported it. The issue about the con, conditions, I didn't add those to my motion, because I, I got the sense from Mr. Franz like that. Um, maybe that wasn't, um, what we should be doing, so, that's what I had to say, thank you.
I just would add the caveat that the current zoning is also appropriate for the, it's just choosing to use it, have requested different use.
No, I, I would just concur with Brian, you know, we're, we're deciding on use, you know, would this be an appropriate use? And whether, whether that can come to fruition, those are things are outside of our purview, and if there's other, you know, major issues, whether you know, environmental, or lot lines or anything else, that'll be handled by the appropriate agencies. And, uh, also, you know, once, uh, uh, title investigations are done and uh, see if there's any other, uh, you know, issues regarding the property or, so.
Um, one other item to note, if this is, uh, changed to residential, I would fully expect there to be a dock permit following that.
Uh, they do not apply for that with us.
Sure. Commenting that the land use will expand beyond the shoreline, I would anticipate as a residential.
Probably, yep.
So to keep that in mind.
The applicant has his hand up too, but if you wanna acknowledge him.
You wanna go ahead and approach?
And, uh, has problems, I, I would have a sewer pump, definitely, and that was brought to my attention, that's a possibility, I would definitely take care of the area. You know, being along sewer to do that, and so the house position, yeah, I could have it on a tab, but then again, I could move down closer to the clubhouse, uh, I don't have a map, uh, but so the, the entire property is not a hill, so I could, I could adjust down toward toward the Marina, away from the, from the hill, so that's not a problem, I'll just take part of the hill and dispose it, was properly dispose it, and, uh, the area, you know, the, the northern area is, I'm not sure if I'm gonna hang on to that, I I might even approach Adelaide if they wanna purchase it, you know, and then it's gonna be open and green, you know, and they can, they can use it, that triangle, the very top of it, you know, right right above the, the drainpipe, you know, Adelaide, you know, I, I might approach them. If they wanna purchase it, and they can keep their beach, and other people are welcome to use it, so I won't be like, you know, I'm gonna fence it off and it's my area, you know, I, open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you for that color, any other commentary or discussion on the side?
Question for a planning manager. Because the desired use can be accommodated with just a simple rezoning, that's the preferred route versus a, a PUD for this, cause there's not multiple different uses being contemplated in a PUD, or could a PUD still be an option?
Well, we have a zoning, uh, district that would allow them to do what they wanna do. And also help the city achieve our standards, so I don't really see the need for a PUD unless you have a specific caveat, maybe you wanted to add, or?
Yeah, it, it was around, um, veg, nat, native vegetation buffers along that shoreline and, and preserving that, and, and
Yeah, we already had.
Elements to it, I mean, if that's incorporated into underlying zoning or, or what, I mean, because, you know, this was lakefront recreation with limited development, um, on it, and, um,
Yeah, it's a, we do have that buffer requirement, does have to be above the ordinary high watermark to develop on anything. And outside of that high area, I don't believe anything is intended to be touched.
And then, let's say hypothetically, they did wanna build it to the max, would be the most that they could develop on the site.
The maximum size?
Or like, put multiple houses on there, one house, like, I mean, could use multi-unit according to urban residential form-based code. I'm just wondering, have you if we have any kind of assessment in terms of like, you know, if they were to deviate or, or.
Aerial, could you go to the aerials?
For some reason, they had to sell the property to somebody else, and now it's, um, urban residential has been built, and now we're getting, you know, a multiplex there, I'm just trying to understand what would be the maximum extent with this con, property configuration, with this rezoning, that development could occur.
That's a good question, cause we went back and forth on what should we, we should zone it to, um, and under the proposed zoning of urban res, is it urban residential? Okay, uh, it would be a duplex and an accessory dwelling in it, but I don't think they'd be, have the room to do the ADU. Especially since you'd have to put it in the back. And we discussed maybe larger to kind of fit in with the master plan's goals of mixed uses, and if you did something like a form-based code neighborhood edge, you could go a small multiplex and retail options, but that doesn't seem to fit that size, so, it's not what we wanted to recommend.
While it might seem minimal, there will also be a, um, change to the view shed along the bike trail. Currently, I believe there's trees and it's kind of an alley corridor. So you may in fact get better view shed if the homeowner decides to remove some of those trees.
He actually is, he's told us a couple times, he's gonna be clearing all those trees out, it's gonna make it safer for the bike um, pedestrians, but we didn't even mention it's gonna open up the views a lot more too as well, so.
Cause again, some of these are things that are, you know, adjacent to the actual use, but they're what the community experience is when we make these changes. So my future anticipation would be, should it turn residential, it would, would be nice to see you know, to maintain some vegetation, which is good for the property, but also to allow folks to share that experience of the lake.
There's quite a large berm next to that building on Adelaide Point. So bikers usually can't see the water much in that area, until you get past that.
Are we, we're talking about where he's wanting to build the house, the berm on the other side of the?
The, well, there's the berm next to the Adelaide Point industrial building, to, it's the west of the property.
Yeah, on the other side of the bike path.
Yeah.
The pre-existing building, the one that existed before.
Pre-existing berm, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Original.
So, it's, it's when you get further north that you have more view, and, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Uh, right, all right. So yeah, there's a lot of moving parts and, uh, still to come, if, if we do rezone it. But yeah, I'm trying to stay focused on the rezoning question, as Mr. Mrazad said, like, it doesn't matter. You know, a number of people that come out and support or oppose it in this case, it doesn't, you know, matter how good of a person you are, though, I trust you to be a very good person, it sounds like you're a great neighbor. Um, and I'm doing good things over there, um, which I very much appreciate, and I would love for you to be, um, be able to do, um, build this, uh, house, uh, for you and your family. So, I, what are we thoughts on the conditions though, we, we don't think there should be any of those conditions that originally
I'm fine with letting it open.
By staff, or?
I think if we don't build anything, if, if this house doesn't happen, I, I don't believe the the Marina intends to build on it, Kohl's doesn't intend to build on it, nor do I think we'd rezone it to industrial, so. So if it doesn't, if a house isn't put here, keeping it as ours.
Is fine.
Is fine.
And it's simply, essentially that comes back to the question, which is, does the master plan want us to maintain the original zoning because that is the zoning? Or do we feel that it is to the benefit of the master plan to allow this change in use?
I think it's a benefit of the master plan because it asks for mixed uses. We don't have enough space to put mixed use here, but it's another different type of use along the waterfront. And there's marinas, there's retail now at Adelaide Point, there's condos, there's a proposed hotel, there's some industrial. So the area is mixed use, not, not this small parcel though. So I do believe it meets the intent of the master plan.
Yes, I have a motion and a support. Any final discussion? Hearing none. Going once. Going twice.
I don't, I mean, well, I mean, no.
I hear you're breathing.
It's fine. I can, I can reflect on this further because this still goes against the civic mission. So if I do think it's appropriate to have those conditions on there after all, I can always, you know, ask the commission to consider that. So I'm comfortable with the motion as it is and I can still reflect on whether those conditions are really important or warranted.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Cypher?
Yes.
Garan?
Yes.
Willat Leroy?
Yes.
Mazaed?
Yes.
Montgomery Keast?
Yes.
Motion passed? All right, I believe we had one final item on the regular agenda, however, that's been removed. Is that correct?
Yes, the last public hearing.
Which?
Was that, oh, item E has been removed?
Which one's been removed?
So this was the, making sure I got the agenda in front of me. Hold on a second. So we had item E was removed at the applicant's request, correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. So do we have any unfinished business?
We have a site plan review still.
That is new, well, you put it after new business.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, no.
Do you want to move it?
No business.
Okay.
It should be under new business.
New business. We have a site plan review. All right. This is case 2025-24, request for a site plan review. We're building additions at 2034, 2084, and 2140 Latimer Drive by GE Aerospace.
So GE Aviation owns all three of these parcels. They acquired 2140 Latimer a couple of years ago, so that's the newest part. The buildings at 2034 and 2084 were combined some time ago. I'm not sure how that was possible because they're three separate parcels. We have noted that to the applicant. There's no reason for them to, they said to keep them separate. So they've actually started the process to combine the parcels. So they would like to put a 33,800 square foot addition on the back of that main building. And they would like to add on to the storage building, a small addition as well. And that would actually spill over onto 2040 Latimer. So that's why that one should be combined as well. We've routed this to all the different departments at City Hall and it's a pretty straightforward plan. There really are no conditions or comments. They, they are adding a lot of parking spaces too. But that also meets the code. They've installed landscape islands and, and are proposing trees on there as well. So everything looks good from a planning perspective on the addition.
Okay, do we have the applicant here? Hello?
Hello, my name is Todd Stivey. I'm with Excel Engineering, prepared the plans. Here representing the applicant. I, we have some guys from GE here as well. So we haven't, not yet, but so, yeah, we just, yeah, like was said, it's fairly straightforward. We are, we're, we're netting 45 additional parking spaces. That's, we're, we're adding quite a few on the easterly side, 113, but we are losing some on the, on the west side. So the net is 45 and we are preserving a fairly significant buffer of trees along that north, north of the parking lot. There is residential property to the north. So that, that's screening both what's already there on the westerly sites. That won't be changing and we're preserving that same width of trees on the, on the east. Yep, we're here for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? As of now? Okay, and so we're doing essentially just a site review here, Mike? And then what, what action do you need from us today?
A motion to approve the site plan. I would also add that the condition that the stormwater permit needs to be amended, they can do that with our engineering department, which I believe they've already started the process.
So moved.
Go ahead.
So moved.
Okay, thank you.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the site plan with the conditions that the lots be combined and the stormwater permits are amended. I did just have one question about the total coverage of non-pervious surface. Do we establish that already?
What's the question?
I think that they were talking about there's islands in the plan. I noticed that too, about the thermo issues.
Is there essentially any opportunity to, you mentioned retaining a buffer for the north side of trees and that there would be, it's very, it's hard to read from the screen. It's very, excuse me. Zoom in.
You have quite a few islands in there, don't you? In your, in your pavement.
Right, if, if you go to the, so there's the westerly two sites that have the, you know, original two buildings that have been connected. If we could go to that first slide. So actually, the, the entire area where the building's being added is currently blacktop. So we're not increasing any impervious. In fact, we're decreasing the impervious on, on the westerly two sites by adding additional islands and green space along the north edge of the existing building. And then, so the, the only, only, the additional impervious is on that far east site where we're adding the parking and preserving the trees on the, on the north. So yes, in total we are, but in the area that's currently all paved and or building, that, that green space is actually increasing. You know, not by a lot, by the, the amount of the islands that we're adding and the, the green space along the, along the building.
It's not any worse than it was.
And we have current, again, just because it's a complex diagram and it's zoomed way out, we have sidewalk access to the spaces within the park. So I don't know that we do. Hard to see.
Sidewalk access?
Latimer. Just trying to understand whether there were sidewalks along Latimer.
I think, well, there's the bike trail on the, on the other side of the road.
Okay. And so it's unimproved on their side.
I'm pretty sure.
Had any considerations of using the large amount of surface area on your roofs for improving the cool, green space and cooling? Has that been considered at all?
Green roofs?
First of all.
I can't do, I always think I can zoom there. Okay. Any other further discussion? Seeing none? Roll call please.
Montgomery Keast?
Yes.
Mazaed?
Yes.
Willat Leroy?
Yes.
Garan?
Yes.
Cypher?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you for your patience today.
Thank you for your investment in our community.
Thanks for sitting here and listening to us talk about cats for an hour. Got to think about every detail.
We do try. All right. We're still in new business technically. One quick question is, is what the items that we've received from comments, like emails and so on, are we uploading those into Civic IO so that's now the future part of the packet?
We can add them in at any time and we've changed it so we can amend things all the way up until after the meeting. So as they come in, we'll just throw them in there.
My recommendation is simply for a sense of FOIA so that maybe we don't necessarily have to retain them.
FOIA, you personally?
Oh, they're.
Oh.
No, we don't.
Yeah, you don't have to retain them.
No.
Yeah.
They're fine.
Yeah, they're on file, yeah.
Yeah, on file.
Yeah, you don't have to.
We will upload them though, I think, so you can read them though.
I think it's useful for the packet information to know, you know, who provided information that was available to us.
Yeah, I think, you know, even if it's. Yeah, whatever timeline, you know, then we try to get that out several days before, another week before, you know, the, the planning commission packet. So if you've got comments or comments were received subsequently, if they could all be shared or uploaded, you know, a day before or, you know, the morning of our meetings or something, just that we have more time to, to review and process it versus.
But for public transparency, just being able, other folks being able to see what we received, if you are able to add it to the meeting information, I think would be super useful. Okay, we have any other business? Seeing none, public comment?
They all left.
Yeah.
Nobody's here. All right, go into the phones. Two, three, one, seven, two, four, sixty-seven, twenty-one. We will wait our minutes. I worried I was going to have to re-suggest me on a 7:00 PM. All right, nobody's calling in? I'll take a motion to close the public comment. Do we even need that?
No.
No, all right. Move to adjourned.
Support. Aye.
Adjourned, all in favor.
It's a long meeting.
Thanks, guys.